This tonight, Mr. Arias with us tonight because in the last week, the Winchester School Committee lost a longtime and beloved colleague, Donna Gilderson, and I would have invited Mr. Arias here tonight to say a few words about her 45 years of service. Is that correct? The Winchester Public Schools and her contributions particularly to the Athletics Department and the students Winchester, who have participated in the Athletics Program and elementary school students for years at Lynch Elementary School. Mr. Arias.
Thank you. Yes. Yeah. So Donna worked at Lynch in McCall for over 45 years. She was the athletic trainer at the high school for over 30 years and for the last three to four years, she served as the Assistant A D, as a site director at Games and basically doing anything and everything to help out in the Athletic Department in Winchester. I had the pleasure of working with Donna for the last nine years. I'm grateful to have her, have known her and call her a friend. I know I'm going to truly miss conversations about sports and, and life while at Games. We've spent a lot of games together. So Donna's love for the Winchester community and her students was immeasurable. I never met anyone that had anything bad to say about Donna. It was always apparent, a student alum, community member that would come up to her at a game, give her a hug. And her first question was, how are you? How's the family? Thinking she was being polite, but she, she knew them and she knew their families as well because either she had them in school. I had a family member in school. And she just touched so many lives. Immediately when they walk away, I'd ask who that was and she'd tell me and give me a full report, what sport they played, if they played a sport, who their family was. She just knew everything about them. And that's what made her so special. When the community found out she was sick, I can't tell you how many text messages and phone calls I received about first asking how she was, what the situation was, and then asking what she needed. Cause the common theme was anything Donna needs, we'll take care of it. And that's just because of the amount of lives she touched in Winchester. I received a text the day we found out about it. And from a former student and current parent, it simply said Winchester lost the legend today. So we did, we indeed lost the legend. I'm sorry.
No worries, Mark. Thank you.
Thanks for being with us.
I just asked that we keep Donna's wife Nancy and her parents and siblings and family and the rest of her loved ones and our thoughts and prayers. Thank everyone.
Thanks so much, Mr. Arias, for being with us and for sharing all those memories of Donna and certainly her memory will be kept alive in the students and families' lives that she's touched and that of her fellow educators. There's, there's always a few special people who walked through our lives and Donna certainly was that for many students and families in Winchester. So we appreciate you being here to share that today and offer our condolences to her family and her thanks for her years of service to Winchester Public Schools as well.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, Mark. Thank you.
Thank, night, Mark. We just wanted to be able to take a moment to remember that at the top of our meeting. And now we will move on to the business of our meeting this evening. We will begin with communications from the School Committee and the Administration around the FY23 Annual Recommendations of the Mass Commission on LGBTQ Youth, Superintendent Summit of Evaluation Background, Discussion of the Assignment of Members to Bargaining Teams. We will pause for some public comments. Our student reps are going to take the summer off. A well-deserved summer vacation for them and their families and they will join us again in September. We will have some reports and discussion items about School Committee Legal Counsel, the Field Management Committee Recommendations for Manchester Field, the Lynch Project Update, a First Reading of a New Policy, B D V on School Committee Officers, and an Introduction to a Discussion on Preschool Tuition. We have some action items, consideration of acceptance of some WIFI grants, some exciting things going on there, consideration of approval of a stipend for the School District Position, Position, Position. We are going to actually remove from the agenda this item this evening because there is some additional details that we need to confirm around both the job description and some of the state requirements for this position. So we're going to hold off on that one for this evening. And we also have the consideration of approval of School Committee Meeting Dates, followed by the Chair Report, the Superintendent Report, and adjournment. And with that, we will jump into the top of the meeting. The first item on our agenda this evening is regarding the Winchester being featured in the FY23 Annual Recommendations for the Mass Commission on LGBTQ Youth. This was a report that this commission, which is part of the Massachusetts State Government, produced in relation to recommendations going forward for education about supporting policies in the state of Massachusetts. We are pleased to congratulate McCall Middle School on their inclusive and LGBTQ supporting policies that are within their handbook. They were awarded the distinction of being the studies, one of the study's two top-ranking safe schools for trans and non-binary students. This distinction was awarded by the Mass Commission on Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, and Questioning Youth. I was pleased to attend the ceremony and see some extraordinary students and educators from across the state who are also actually putting many of these policies into action. This was established by laws, an independent agency of the Commonwealth to recommend all branches of state government have effective policies, programs, and resources for LGBTQ youth to thrive. Excerpts from McCall's 2021-22 School Year Handbook, Section on Gender Nondiscrimination, were uplifted as model language for trans-inclusive education policy. This handbook language was born of the School Committee Policy developed in 2018 in concert with the middle school GSA and the high school spectrum organizations. I'd just like to offer my congratulations to the students, teachers, and School Committee members who made this possible. According to the report, data from the 2019 Massachusetts Youth Risk Behavior Survey, they found that compared to non-LGBTQ peers, LGBTQ youth are twice as likely to experience bullying, three and a half times as likely to skip school because they feel unsafe, and four and a half times as likely to attempt suicide. This is why it's so important to have proactive policies like these in place to create practices to support and include LGBTQ students in our state and in our schools here in Winchester. So congratulations to McCall for including this language and I look forward to seeing the recommendations that this organization has put out and be spread across Massachusetts. The next thing that we have on our communications is the superintendent. The Summit of Evaluation is coming up. There's some background in your packets, both from Desi and M A S C. Our timeline for this is for the evaluation presented at the late July meeting. Dr. Hackett is intending to complete a self-evaluation by mid-July using the same documents and rubric that we will use in evaluating him. I would like to request School Committee members to complete their evaluation of Dr. Hackett by July 22nd in order to be able to prepare the complete document for presentation at the July 26th meeting. I'd also invite you to schedule a meeting with Dr. Hackett once your evaluation is complete, so that you're able to go over that with him. And if you have any questions about this process or any of these timelines, if you can feel free to reach out to myself or Dr. Hackett in the coming weeks. The last item I have on communications is just a notification to the Committee of the Assignment of Members to Bargaining Teams. Units A and Unit B have requested to bargain and have begun to do so. Ms. Bollinaze and Mr. Brady have been attending the meetings on behalf of the School Committee for Unit A and Mr. Hopcraft and myself have been attending for Unit B. As we move forward, there will be other bargaining teams. Anyone who is interested in participating in can let me know to be a part of. Dr. Hackett, did you have anything else to add?
Just wanted to, I, this is an item that was not anticipated by the Chair. Add also, well, no, actually, we have it on there. Just add that under action items, this was not part of the post meeting. Action Item 5A, Consideration of Acceptance for the WIFI June Grants. But I would also like to have Dr. Alenema talk a little bit about the kickoff today for our summer programming.
Thank you. And this morning we launched, so we have several summer programs going, but this morning was our launch of the Extended Year Academic Support Program. And this was to open to all students in the district. Very popular. We still have families on wait lists. But it was great this morning to see, you know, you would think they were excited for their summer, but nope, they were excited to be back to school right after the weekend. So it was a great kickoff and we are happy to be able to host most of our summer programs under one roof this year. So everyone's not running around the district. And it was at the high school. So the kindergartners were duly impressed with being excited of being at the big school. So we had to have lots of talks about that someday they will come here. So it's a great start and thank you to all of our staff hosting the many, many programs this summer. It will be a busy place between that and the P D with the teachers and the students.
Mr. Nixon, did you have a question about that?
I do. I have a numbers question for Dr. Alenema. Approximately, how many kids do we have in E Y P this summer at the high school?
And so for the extended summer for all students in the district, we have probably close to 300 students attending that. For our U I P, we have over 100 students attending that. For our enrichment program, we have a couple of hundred students attending that. And for our E L program, we probably have 60, 65 so students attending that.
Wow. Those are tremendous numbers and now we understand why they're at the high school. Is for that 300 kids in that first category, are they somewhat evenly distributed across all grades or is it more heavily weighted towards elementary?
That's just an elementary program.
Yeah. Okay. Got it. Yep. Very good. Thank you. I'm pleased to know that, you know, the participation is that high and that we're able to offer that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm excited that you're able to use the high school, Dr. Alenema, and those little kids are getting a short glimpse of their future and it's such a great facility and I'm sure they appreciate the air conditioning.
I'm sure they do too. That was one of our big goals. Of course, we are running around with scoop chairs and rugs this morning so that they will have appropriate furniture sizes.
I was wondering about that, but I figured you had it covered. Ms. Bollinaze, did you have a question before we move on?
Oh, I was just wondering if the P D sessions, if any of them would be open to School Committee members?
Absolutely. You're more than welcome. And I will, I'll make a note and I'll send you all a list that kicks off. I don't think we had anything today, but that starts tomorrow. So the teachers will be back at it by tomorrow too. So.
Great. Thank you so much.
Sure.
And this is just a communication. So Mr. Brady, I'll take your, your last comment and then we'll try to move on.
Thank you. Just a real quick question. You mentioned a waiting list about how many families were on that waiting list who weren't able to access the program?
And so we, I mean, just about every family got into one of the sessions. So they're two-week sessions. So our goal was to get everybody in, but many families would have liked multiple sessions. And we just did not have enough between all the programs staffing for that this summer. So.
Okay. But everybody got at least one.
Everybody got something, right? And we're running those like last summer humanities and STEM. So lots of students did get into one of each.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you so much. Thanks for sharing that update for us. We look forward to at the end of the summer, hearing how it went. And with that, we will move on to public comment. I do not see any attendees. So I do not believe we have anyone for public comment this evening. Dr. Hackett, can I confirm that with you?
You, I would confirm that as well, unless, unless when Cam has something to say this evening.
And I guess then with that, we will move on from public comment into the reports and discussion items. Our first item of business this night, tonight on our reports and discussion items is School Committee Legal Counsel. School Committee has expressed a desire to explore options for legal counsel. You should have all received a letter from the firm Murphy, Lemire and Murphy in regard to general counsel services, which was included in your packet. Dr. Hackett, would you like to introduce this item and any recommendations you have regarding?
I would like to introduce, introduce this item by requesting that the committee consider postponing this item for right now and move on to 4B. I had told our, the attendees that it would be a little bit later. We're whipping right through this agenda pretty quickly. So I will let you know as soon as they arrive.
Okay, great. With the, if I see general approval, yes, we will move this to a little bit later. Excellent. Then we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the Field Management Committee Recommendations for Manchester Field. A little bit of background for everyone. In 2015, I believe, was the year that the Manchester Field Policy was initially written. In 2018, School Committee reviewed some policy changes regarding our fields, F G, F H, and F I, which included the use of field lights at Norton Stadium on Manchester Field. And more recently, the Field Management Committee in the last week has attended a policy subcommittee meeting to recommend changes to the fee structure for the public use. So non-resident or for-profit use agencies that run our facilities. This information was included in your packet. So you could see the change in rate. It's in the, it is in the chart that is located in that document. I don't know if you have that available to pull up for us, Dr. Hackett, while I'm introducing this. Additionally, they've notified us that they have begun, voted to begin the process to review policy F H in regard to the times of field lighting as the Manchester Field Facility lighting policy dims the lights earlier than other town and school facilities. Our joint policy on Manchester Field states that the Field Management Committee must first make a policy recommendation and hold their own public hearing. This recommendation would then be presented to School Committee and the Select Board for their discussion and vote. So I'm not looking for a vote particularly on anything on this today as we do not yet have the final recommendations from the Field Management Committee. But I wanted to give the committee the background and a heads up that this may be before us in the near future. Ms. Bollinaze may have something additional to add from Policy Subcommittee and following that, I would like to yield the floor to Mr. Brady if he has anything to add from Field Management. And then I'm happy to open this up for discussion. Ms. Bollinaze, did you have anything additional to add from policy? We all have to get used to Zoom again.
I know. Sorry. Shifting between screens. No, nothing more in particular from policy. I think with the, with, I think the changes that are described here were fairly straightforward. And then for, with regard to F H, I think Manchester Field is, the lights are usually shut off at 8:30. Over at Skilling's Field, the lights are shut off at 9:30. So there's a desire to see this be a little bit more consistent down the road. But I think this is, this will be subject to discussion and a public hearing, et cetera. So before it comes back to School Committee and the Select Board for a vote.
Thanks, Ms. Bollinaze. Mr. Brady, did you have any additional information from any of the Field Management discussion?
I think just, I appreciate what Karen said. And then I, I think looking at the changes, I believe the idea is to increase the fee for the non-residents for profits. Is that correct?
And that is, I believe that's correct as well. That's what we heard at policy. Dr. Hackett, if you can page down, we can see where that is on the graph there. So it is not highlighted on your chart, but it is in the, oh, there it is, tier five. It is still highlighted. So the private and nonprofit programs, they are increasing it from a flat rate to a per hour rate was my understanding, Mr. Brady.
Yeah. And I think that. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say that I think that that is also the intention then of looking back at the lighting policy is that they would like the fields to be more self-sustaining, prioritizing our, our youth programs and school programs first, but then being able to have enough time left with lights on the field to be able to use some of that increase in funding to be able to then help maintain and sustain it.
Yeah, I think the, the increase is definitely in line with what other places will charge. So I think we, we were probably the best deal around. And there were also times in the past, years ago, where we weren't really collecting fees as much as we should. So I think, you know, both with collecting the fees more consistently and having fees that are more market rates with neighboring towns and communities, I think we'll get closer to that goal that you stated to, to make them as self-sustaining as possible, which I think is a definitely a possibility in what people are aiming towards.
Thank you. Mr. Hopcraft.
I just wanted to clarify, I thought you said nonprofit and it's a private and for-profit programs that, that the fee is being increased for. I just wanted to clarify that if I, if I heard that correctly.
That's correct. I, I sometimes am saying not, not-for-profit, which I realize is a double negative. So thanks for clarifying that. Go ahead, Mr. Nixon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So a couple of comments. Dr. Hackett and I developed with Mr. Arias middle of last summer, a, a document that tries, that basically shows when the field is even available after school for anyone. It backs out the use by our varsity and sub-varsity athletics. And then you see what's left. I'm talking about Manchester Field. Taking into account our lighting policy and it basically shows how many hours that field is actually available for revenue generation. And given how restrictive that policy is, kind of makes you wonder why we put, ever put up lights to begin with. So Dr. Hackett, I, unless you think it's inappropriate, I think it would be helpful if we can find that document circulated to the School Committee prior to that next meeting, because I think it gives a good sort of overall view of the current conditions. Mr. Arias has, as Athletic Director, has expressed a willingness to adjust some of our athletics practice schedules on the field by some modest increment, plus or minus 15, 20 minutes. If that might then permit a, an attractive block of time for some group that would want to rent the field subsequently. So I just want to acknowledge that. I appreciate his flexibility. The goal being to get some more revenue generated from the field. There will be those, of course, who make, that make the point that the more the field is used, you know, the, it wears out a little more quickly. That's true. But I don't think we're getting the kind of utilization out of that field we ever intended. But the other point I just wanted to make, and this is somewhat as the contrarian, I, I don't recall, and I'm thinking back to 2015, 2016, when we developed that existing policy with the Select Board. We cared a lot about whether lights were on or off and which seasons and what hours and so forth. I don't recall that we've ever set a fee for field use. And I'm actually kind of questioning if we even should be doing that. I, I, I look to the, and I'm, I'm suggesting this because when Mr. Brady was just saying a few minutes ago, we didn't always do a good job collecting. I mean, that, that's really, that goes through the rec department and through the Director of the Rec Department for scheduling the field. If we have police on the field, if we have rec folks on the field, that D P W comes afterwards to clean up, you know, those are all overhead costs that are managed by others outside the school district and invoiced. I like to think that the Field Management Committee and Mr. Brady serves on our, you know, representing us there is a great group to evaluate with Nick if some adjustments have to be made. If we are in a position of voting a change in fee, does that mean the Select Board is doing it as well? I just don't think we've gotten into these weeds before and it feels very sort of operational and the kind of thing that I would assume Field Management can sort of handle on their own. So I wanted to throw that out there. I don't think we've done this before. I think we, we absolutely created tiers and we talked about seasons and we talked about hours a day. And I don't think we, we got into dollars. Because this is a little bit different than, for instance, preschool and other district programs, right? Where we have the impact is on our, our staff. And we're accounting for it and we're billing for it. We, meaning the district. So I want to throw that out there. I don't know if Dr. Hackett has any opinion on that or Mr. Brady, but I, I mean, I certainly trust Mr. Brady and others on Field Management to kind of revisit this however frequently.
Actually, Mr. Nixon, can I stop you? Because I think, I think maybe you have actually misunderstood. As I stated in the intro, this was not information for us to vote on or nor our policy at this point. This was information that Fields Management was sharing with us on changes they're making to the fee structure. What they will probably be looking to us to do is to, to vote on changes that come to policy F H, which would be exactly what you're talking about, the schedule and lighting times on the field. This was background information to let you know why Fields Management was taking a look at this and what the changes were going to be. So both to the schedule that you alluded to earlier regarding the time use on the field, that should also go back to Field Management Committee because, no pun intended, but the ball is really in their court right now. So our policy reads that Field Management needs to first review the policy and make recommendations to us. And this is just sharing background to let you know where they are in that process.
I appreciate that and you were clear. I know we aren't voting anything tonight. As I was reviewing the packet, it wasn't 100% clear to me if maybe there was going to be some suggestion we vote in the future, a fee schedule.
Just policy.
Just, just policy, which would be like, you know, seasons and hours of lights and so forth, right?
Correct.
Got it.
Just policy F H. Yep.
I appreciate it. Thank you for the clarification.
Yep. Mr. Brady, did you have anything else to add? Is that your understanding is?
No, I think we're good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay. Great. Then I look forward to hearing back from Field Management. They will be taking the next steps in this process to use, as I was just stating, this information and reviewing on the, the lighting policy for Manchester Field and the use policy and will bring recommendations back to us. If anybody has any further questions about that, I'd encourage you to review that policy. F H in the policy manual that, if you haven't seen it before, I know Mr. Nixon has probably had a lot of experience with it being on the committee when it was probably likely developed and revised. So it is quite, it is a two-page-long policy in the policy manual that really outlines a lot of what's going on on that field. And with that, with no other objections, I will move on to the legal counsel. I believe we can move back to that. I see Mr. Coleman and Ms. McNulty here with us. Dr. Hackett, are we ready to move back on to that item?
We are. Thank you, Madam Chair. And through you, I would just like to take a moment to introduce Michelle McNulty and Josh Coleman from Murphy, Lemire, and Murphy. As you know, the, the committee, as well as the administration, have expressed some interest in exploring options for legal counsel moving forward, particularly or really specifically to Labor Counsel. I, full disclosure, I have worked with Murphy, Lemire, and Murphy in a previous life. And I, I regard them highly in terms of their experience. And I, I, I regard them highly uh in terms of their experience and their broad range of of ability to support issues within the schools. Um, and I just uh would, I'm, I'm pleased to be able to have them here tonight just to kind of introduce themselves and, and uh have you have a chance to ask questions. Um, and uh additionally, just to be really clear that there is no action expected tonight. This is just an opportunity for you to meet this uh particular firm, which um I would like to, I don't know, uh, Mr. Coleman, whether or not you'll be starting this evening or Ms. McNulty, we'll be starting, but uh just turn it over to you.
Sure. Uh, good evening. Sorry, I have a cold, so I'm pardoned for that. Um, so my name is Josh Coleman here with my partner, Michelle McNulty. She's gonna give a broad overview of the firm and the history since Michelle's jokes. That she's been there for just a few years and then I'll talk about sort of my role and labor's role and what services we can provide and what that looks like. So I'll turn it over to Michelle at this point.
Thank you, Josh. And I want to thank you, um, members of the school committee for taking the time to meet with us tonight and Superintendent Hackett for inviting us. Um, we are, are thrilled to be able to tell you a little bit about our firm. Um, Murphy Lemire and Murphy has been at the front of public sector collective bargaining representation in Massachusetts. The partners of the firm, Richard Murphy and Jack Lamery, who founded the firm, um, really were one of the first attorneys to represent municipalities in collective bargaining when that law was passed in nineteen sixty-nine. Now, I haven't been there that long, but I have been with the firm for about thirty-three years. Um, I kind of reference it as being some, somewhat of a unicorn. I came when I was in law school and loved it so much and stayed. Um, it is a special place. This is all we do. We represent public sector um clients, mostly school committees, but also some cities and towns, some counties, regional school districts, some collaboratives. And a great deal of our practice is collective bargaining. Um, that's primarily what I do. Um, the negotiations for school and town clients at all stages, whether it's a brand-new union coming in or um successor negotiations, whether it's IBB or traditional, um, and also when the negotiations don't go so well. We're also dealing with that. Um, Josh helps me and assists. We kind of work as a partnership on the public sector employment pieces. Um, his skill set, as he will get into, is um as extensive as mine when it comes to the collective bargaining, but also the additional pieces of the public employee disciplinary actions. Um, grievances, investigations, Title IX, those types of things. Um, we pride ourselves on being a very responsive firm. I think everybody now works twenty-four seven, which we could have a very long debate about the impact of that on, on our society, but for our field, it is paramount. It is just so important that our clients are able to get the responses that they need when they need them. And that is something that we hold near and dear to our practice and our style. And um, I think that if you ask any of our clients, you will uniformly hear that we are there when they need us. Um, the firm is a um small size. There are eight attorneys. We think that is a better ability for us to give that one-on-one personal attention to our clients. You know who you are going to get. Um, if your primary attorney on your district is Josh, Josh is the one you're going to be speaking with. Um, we have other attorneys with certain skill sets and we bring them in as we need them. But you're not going to be having a different attorney show up in your district um from week to week. You're gonna know who you're dealing with and you're going to know how they're gonna respond and that you're going to get the attention that your district deserves. Um, that is a quick overview. I don't want to take up too much time. I know you have our packet, but I'd like to turn it over to Josh to speak a little bit and then um, we are very happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Michelle. Um, so just a little about me. As Dr. Hackett alluded, I worked with him for four years in Braintree. I've been doing this for, now I feel old, eighteen years, not quite as long as my boss, but um, you know, I do collective bargaining, um, discipline, public records, open meeting law, the whole gamut of, and you know, of labor aspects. I also do some litigation, some MCAD work. So we really try to be full service to our clients and I, I think what sets us apart, we pretty much have a very collaborative approach between the labor attorneys. So we bounce questions off, you know, we're, we're not a firm that's gonna bill you to spend six hours writing a research memo where, you know, if you want an opinion letter, of course, we are prepared to do that. But we, we really pride ourselves on practical advice in a responsive matter. I think Frank could attest that he's probably called me more times than I, I'd like to admit on Sunday, but you know, that's okay because we're there. Um, you know, but you know, time-sensitive approach, and if for some reason one of us can't get that, you know, you're gonna deal with me, or you know, there's another colleague in our department, if something time-sensitive comes up, I'm not available, but you know, we pride ourselves on being timely because we understand we're dealing with disciplinary matters, we're dealing with putting employees on administrative leave, we're dealing with the press, you know, so we really try to be full service in all that respects. Um, and then as well as that, as Michelle alluded to, I do some Title IX work on the employee side. There's a whole other practice that works on student services side, that's another several attorneys. But obviously this focus on, on labor. But you know, we really try to work and adapt to the client's style, you know, if you want us at the table for bargaining, we can be there. If you'd rather have us in the background and review proposals, give a few input, say, hey, think of this, think of these issues. You know, so we kind of adapt to the client's style and what they need, you know, we're never gonna insist we have to be at the table. That's really the client's call. And yeah, and so like I said, I've been doing this for about eighteen years. Before this, I was with another municipal firm doing municipal and school work. And before that, as some, you know, may know, I worked for Mike Wong for a little while. Um, and you know, really, we try to be as well-rounded in all aspects and also keeping abreast of changes in the law and all those things.
Josh, I, I don't want to editorialize, but would you say those four years are probably the best years of your life? Just.
Uh, I'm gonna reserve judgment, Frank.
Okay, fair. That's fair. That's fair. Thank you.
A, and we try to be, you know, reasonable and, you know, we're pretty easygoing folks, which I think, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman and Ms. McNulty for introducing the firm. We appreciate you being here with us this evening. And certainly, Dr. Hackett, we appreciate um your recommendation and experience with um Mr. Coleman in the past. Um, I'd like to open it up to the committee to see if you have any questions um for um either of the attorneys here this evening. That is my best tweet time. Ah, Mr. Hopcroft, see?
I just felt like I needed to, to chime in. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, I, I appreciate the, the introduction and the materials that, that you both gave us. It looks great and, and the um, you know, reference, I know was um Dr. Hackett's uh best year, four years of his life, um, uh, at least. Curious, you know, I, I, I think it's wonderful, the, the hands-on approach, you know, a lot of times with firms, you get handed down to associates and, and so that's certainly a strength that, that you have. Um, wondering um how the caseload, um, you know, management, you know, if, if you've had any, any challenges on the other end of this of, of, you know, um, when things get hot with a lot of clients at once, um, you know, you know, managing that in a smaller um firm, um, how you handle that?
So, so I'll, I'll jump in here. Um, I think that our most heated uh time period had to have been in twenty twenty as we were dealing with the fact that it wasn't just the typical cycles for bargaining, which we manage, right? We know which districts are coming up at the table, three years, we try to have them all distributed among us, so nobody's at the table, five nights a week, three negotiations a day. Um, it's all manageable, but then COVID hit and every single one of our clients was at the bargaining table at the same time, both for the closure in the spring and then as we were going back to reopening in September. And I have to tell you, in, in, by many years, um, that was one of the most frenzied times that I can recall. And you know what? We, we did it. I mean, part of it has to do with the experience that we have. Um, a good deal of it has to do with the relationships that we have been able to forge, not only with our clients being school committees, superintendent and administrative team, but also with the unions. Because when you've been in a district for a number of years and you have negotiated three, four or five contracts, you forged for the most part decent relationships. We always have those times when things go a little awry and you may be a mediation or whatnot, but we do pride ourselves on um trying to work in, when we can, in a collaborative fashion with the unions, and so that builds the trust. And so between all of that and the ability that Josh has and brings to the table, um, Peter Sumner's, the other attorney who works in the area of labor relations in our firm, we were able to service all of our clients. Nobody had to wait. We might have just distributed some of the accounts differently, so if I had been primary on a particular um contract, it may have shifted over to Josh, but because we worked so closely, it was almost seamless. And um, we're able to do it. We all know what we need to do, when we need to do it, and we've been able to do it.
Just to pick up briefly on what Michelle said, you know, we would have weekly staff meetings, try, because the law literally was changing. I, I'd like to say week to week, it was like day to day. Desi memos and, you know, we divide up between Michelle and myself and Peter, you know, let's look at this issue, like it's, look at, because there was no case law. It's like the law was being written as we were advising our clients, like there was no playbook for this. So, you know, that's, you know, sort of how we operated and Michelle and I split up and, you know, we joked like we'd both come in the office at seven in the morning. Our offices are what, twelve feet apart and we never see each other and go home at seven or eight P M, but we manage through and, you know, try to be responsive, especially. And even when I was working with Dr. Hackett in Braintree, you know, I remember we had some fun bargaining sessions. I use that word loosely. You know, bargaining over return to schools and deadlines and, you know, just made it work with the clients because we, we understand the client. If we say to a client, sorry, I can't get to you for two weeks, or I'm gonna assign you someone you have had no relationship with, that's not uh effective way to manage a relationship with the client.
The other thing, sorry, Josh, the other thing that I would like to add is we are mindful of our clients and our, the size of our client um list. So there are a lot of times when we will get um entreaties from districts that are seeking legal counsel. We do not apply to every request for proposals that crosses our desk because we are somewhat selective to think about what can we manage? Because we do have that commitment to the clients we already have and we are going to forge a commitment to any new client. So we're not gonna just take on a client willy-nilly just to start growing our client list. Um, and so even when we come before you, prior to doing so, we sit and we look at everything and we say, okay, can, can we manage this to the same level and that we give to all of our clients? And we feel that we can, so I think we have a good balance.
Thank you. Uh, the pandemic is certainly a great example for that question and uh uh, and maybe also of your twenty-four-seven service policy. So hopefully your spouses are, are uh still with you and and, and again, thank you for the answer.
And Mr. Hopcroft, thank you for your question. And I've realized that while we're speaking, that we've gotten to know Mr. Coleman and Ms. McNulty a little bit, but we didn't introduce ourselves. So if you'd like to kick us off, Mr. Hopcroft, and then if everybody'd just like to do a quick introduction to um the team here, that would be great.
Sure. Uh, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm Tom Hopcroft. I'm actually a recovering attorney. Um, I, I'm vice chair of the school committee.
Mr. Brady? Going down my screen.
I, I have a yelling uh one-and-a-half-year-old in the background. I'm Seamus Brady. I work in Melrose as an assistant principal and special ed coordinator, and I'm the recording secretary of the school committee.
Ms. Bollinese?
Hi, I'm Cara Mariama Bolanese. This is my fourth year on the school committee. Um. Yes, that's about that.
And a recovering chair.
Recovering chair. I was debating whether or not to say that, though. Thank you.
Mr. Nixon?
Uh, hi, folks. My name's Chris Nixon. I'm thirteen-year member on the school committee. Um, and I appreciate you being here tonight. Ms. Bergstrom, can I uh fire off a couple of questions for these folks?
Wow, we have you. Go right ahead, Mr. Nixon.
Sure. So I, two, two things really. In, in the packet, as I was re- reviewing the resumes of, of the partners, what I thought was really interesting is looking at some of the early professional background and I'm I'm really intrigued that uh we have someone at the firm who was a school district employee. I think maybe a school psychologist or working in that realm in some capacity. You, you've got some folks who worked um for municipalities um on the payroll um at town hall or, or at city hall, and I, I think that's that's really unique. I wanted to ask you all if um i- is there any, a, a couple of other highlights you might want to share with us? Either about your own sort of professional background that you feel makes you, I don't want to say especially qualified, but maybe broadens your perspective for a district like Winchester. So that's, I guess, the puffball question. And then my second one, um, I was curious to know in particular what experience you have with OCR at the federal level. Um, and I, I only asked that because I'd scanned through the information and if it's there, I apologize, but I, I wasn't able to pick that up as I was reviewing the material. Thanks.
So I'll, I'll start and then um Josh can, can wrap up because Josh can speak about the OCR experience. Um, so I, I, I'll have to be honest with you. I started with this firm as a second-year law student. Um, Dick Murphy, who was the uh, one of the founding partners, was basically my mentor and my teacher, and I started off going to arbitrations with him while I was still in law school and working on briefs and then staying, and he and Jack Lamery taught me really the, the whole skill set of labor law. Um, and they, you know, I could not have been any more privileged than to have learned from two um gentlemen who really were at the forefront of representation of municipalities. And so through those years that I have been with the firm, I have represented all sorts of school districts, whether they are small, very suburban districts, or whether they are larger urban districts, whether they are diverse, whether they are on the higher socioeconomic end. Um, and I am also town council for the town of Whitman on the South Shore. And that's really the background and the highlights that I bring to representing a district like Winchester. Um, it, again, some can say, well, you haven't done anything other than municipal law. Well, I can say that for a short period of time, I did practice in the family law area. Uh, my last family law case was pro- approximately twenty-two years ago. And um, I did um dabble in that area at the time to get myself more courtroom experience because our practice tends to be more administration, administrative law-based, whether it's before the Department of Labor Relations, Civil Service Commission, um arbitrations, that sort of thing. And at the time, back then, in my younger days, I wanted to get some courtroom experience and um assisting with the firm's family law practice was one way of doing that. But um Josh can speak to not only his experience and some of his other um, other employers, but also the OCR.
Sure. Uh, so Chris, thanks for the question. So, you know, my experience is I went to Northeastern Law and graduated in two thousand and four. You know, I originally thought I wanted to be a union attorney and realized at the time what the market was and wasn't in terms of union firms and figured out I could do a lot of good working with management in a light labor relations aspect. And that's where I started my career with the T, with a small organization of six thousand employees, all of who mostly are unionized. And so I like to think when I look at, you know, an issue at the table, obviously I'm gonna be a zealous advocate for my client, but I'm also looking at it, all right, you have to have a continuing relationship with the union, with the MTA rep, with the union president. You know, obviously, sometimes you have to agree to disagree, but I try to bring that experience to the table and sort of approaching negotiations in all aspects of what I do. Um, one notable highlight recently, myself and another attorney in the firm won a case in the First Circuit, dealing with the concept of cyberbullying over Snapchat. It's a case of first impression and uh the First Circuit involved the Hopkinton Public Schools. The court upheld the right of schools to discipline students for engaging in cyberbullying. It was a group Snapchat issue. Um, it's kind of a unique case. It's one of the first in the country as far as I know. Um, so that was a really great experience to work on that kind of issue. Um, and, you know, and dealing with the First Amendment issues, which we also deal with often. Um, in terms of offices of civil rights, I do some work with the offices of civil rights, whether it's bullying or harassment complaint. I dealt with uh accessibility issues. More recently, I was dealing with the Title Nine. More recently, I was dealing with the title line equity issue in terms of equity of resources based on gender. Also, there's a whole department in our office that do OCR complaints in addition to myself. When we have student, you know, often it's student disciplinary issues that end up at offices civil rights. So, you know, we're well versed in working on that type issue. And I, you know, I think sometimes clients and I always tell them you sort of underestimate how much, why it's important to give them so much information because that's sort of putting your best foot forward, even though OCR can be a challenge to deal with. But that's just a few things.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Questions, Mr. Nixon. I'd like to give the our other School Committee members or any of our staff who might have some questions for the attorneys present with us today. If you, anybody else has any further things to add, I'm happy to hear from you. Just raise your hand. We can hear you.
Oh, okay, I couldn't tell. I just had a very quick question. Travel expenses, if you were to have to come up to Winchester, is that part of out of pocket expense or?
Or you answer where we don't charge for generally for travel expenses. And so, you know, the time to lovely sit in the 93 traffic is our time, not yours. And likewise, we don't charge for paralegals or anything of that nature. It's a flat rate, you know, for the services.
Great, thank you. That was also a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we are not, this is just a report and discussion item today. No action, we're not taking any action on this. I would encourage any committee members, sometimes in reflecting upon what's been said, you may have some additional questions to please reach out to Dr. Hackett and he will either be able to direct questions to Mr. Coleman or Ms. McNulty or connect you with them perhaps directly and we will see what we can get answered for you. We'd like to thank you for being with us today. We really appreciate you joining us on Zoom. We thought we were back in person, but not quite entirely rid of Zoom yet. So thanks for being flexible and joining us here today.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night. Bye bye now.
Good night.
Right.
And with that, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the Lynch Project update. The, we are going to get a brief status update on the MSBA Lynch Replacement Program. I was just going to say, if anybody hasn't been on the Lynch 22, 2022 site recently, I believe there are some updates there that I think Dr. Hackett may be walking us through. Our goal for the committee is with the project moving steadily forward, we would like to consider having at least monthly updates on this project. I think a lot is planned to happen over the summer and we want to make sure that the committee is well informed about the process timelines and decisions that are going to need to be made. Dr. Hackett will be starting the presentation on this topic today. And future meetings, we hope to have TAPE Architects join us again soon. And we certainly hope that Mr. Nixon will be able to weigh in after Dr. Hackett kicks us off as well. Dr. Hackett.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you to the committee. Just to kind of let you know that there, to the chair's point, there is a lot of work that is going to be happening, happening this summer. Some really important work that normally there's the timing of this project has always been a little bit off from the perspective of what the life or kind of the pace of the school year is. We are, we have been approved, the MSBA has approved our PSR. And now we are heading into schematic design, which the schematic design report, as you can see here, is due on September 1st, which is neither convenient nor helpful in many ways. The MSBA, as much as they're great to work with, some of their timelines are can put some additional pressure on school systems, particularly when we're talking about the level of detail that we get into with a schematic design. So these next few months are critical to the overall design of the now we are really into very specific designs around the classrooms, things such as where is the teaching wall going to be? What are the, what's the FFNE, the furniture fixtures, that equipment going to look like? What's the technology going to look like? How is that going to be placed within the classrooms? Some of those real, those items that really affect the lives of teachers, educators and our students. Some of the most critical decisions really for, for education, from my perspective, happened this summer. We've really worked hard up to this point. I think the design team and the EFPPC has done a tremendous job really incorporating and getting feedback from, from the school community. We've had, we've had several sessions, Mr. Hopcroft joined me, a parent session one evening at Lynch. I was able to get to a couple, I actually, we held a couple of sessions with, with teachers and we also invited parents as well, but it was mainly for teachers. A few weeks ago is had good discussions or I mean, I think the general feedback has been really strong. People are excited about the project from the school community perspective, but I'm not entirely sure that people understand entirely the amount of work that's going to be happening this summer. This, this is a, we're on a fast pace these next several months. So any hopes and dreams of really having much rest over the course of the summer in terms of the, this project are just would make sure that everyone keeps manages their expectations about, about that because we will be really into the details, into the weeds on, on the project itself. We have established good connections with the school community. We will be over the course of the summer offering multiple opportunities for parents who are interested. We have clearly some really good connections with our parent teacher communities. We have teachers who are, who are and will be available over the course of the summer for us to be able to run these, some of the more important decisions for them and in their life within the school by them over the course of the next few months so that they can actually weigh in on and have feed, give us feedback on their thoughts on some of the decisions that need to get made. So again, not really as timely as we would like. The, the summer is not a great time and from my perspective and experience to be going into schematic design, but that's, that's where we are. The project is on time and on time and on the budget, as we all like to say. But that is where we are right now. And I would have Mr. Nixon speak to specifically the, the website that we've, that I've called up here. This, he has spent hours and hours and hours and days on this particular project. I know he has provided and just launched some additional updates to it. So with that, Mr. Nixon, I turn it over to you. Sure. Thank you. Hear me, okay? So actually, if you leave it right there, the blue bar, we have an update tonight under what's next. So we just got our revised geotech proposal about 43 minutes ago. I'm sure Dr. Hackett has reviewed it in detail. Now that the MSBA has approved what we used to call the N5 option, and that's our preferred option, we have a pretty good idea of the footprint of the building and where it falls. So now we need to go back and do much more geotechnical investigation and that drives our foundation and structural design of the project. We're hoping that that work can get started in July while basically everybody's off site. So that would be helpful. And the EFPPC is going to be reviewing that proposal in the next couple of days and we may even be scheduling a special meeting so that we can approve it. We're funding that through the $1.5 million town meeting had already set aside for the feasibility study. This is a good example of how we're, we're trying to, if not clawback time that we lost back in, you know, November of 20, at least do our best to manage the schedule. We have typically TAPE would look for additional geotech investigations after schematic design has been submitted and approved. But since the preferred option has been given a green light and because we have the funding, this is work that we know we'll have to do at some point, better to do it now because as we all know, the longer you wait, the more expensive things become. So we're going to take advantage of the summer and get this work done. So I'm excited about that. And I think I've, I think everybody on the committee has heard this, but it's worth repeating that the, the challenges we have with the, the schedule and all the work that happens this summer really goes back to that period during eligibility when the project went on hold from November, I think it was November of 20 to January 21, when we were able to determine the MSBA had some bad housing data for Winchester. So we, we kind of got out of line and we learned that not only did we lose the time from stepping out of line, but some districts were basically allowed to take our spot. So we've been, as I said, trying to claw that back ever since. So, but that's okay. That is what it is. The, the team is still very confident that we can meet, meet the overall construction schedules and substantial completion. So there's one other bit of very recent news I'm happy to share and it's here under that schedule summary. You'll notice we, we've been talking for some time now about a debt exclusion override vote in January. We don't have a specific date on the website, but we can tell you it's going to be January 7th. Dr. Hackett and I had a very helpful meeting with town manager, town clerk, Mr. Mucci from the select board, Mr. Nardone, just reviewing the MSBA schedule requirements. And Frank was very helpful in kind of reassuring the town clerk that the high school would be available for the special election. Ms. Lannan has discouraged us from, you know, sort of formally saying this is when the election is going to be. There is a process that she has to go through with the select board, as you can imagine, where it actually gets voted. I think I'm saying that the right way, Dr. Hackett. But it, it, it has been determined kind of inside baseball, January 7th will be the date. And so we're excited about that. The VO debt exclusion override was on January 11th back in 2011. So this works well on the schedule. We feel like we can get through fall town meeting, give everybody a little bit of a break, get through Thanksgiving and then focus once again on messaging and answer questions from the community as we kind of move towards the holidays at the end of December. So I'm pretty pleased with that date. I think that'll work well for us. The other two things, I guess, I would just mention, or maybe one other thing is next big decision for the EFPPC is about project delivery method. We need to decide if this is going to be a traditional design, what we call a design bid build project, or is it going to be CM at risk? And the biggest distinction is in design bid build. You, you literally, the architects and engineers literally finish the drawings that go out on the street. There's a bid, you have filed sub bids, you take the lowest qualified bidder, minus anybody that you excluded and you kind of, that's the team you get. This is how we built VO. This is how we built the McCall expansion. But we have experience with the other method, which is CM at risk, which is where you bring in the construction manager. One might say it's, it's kind of like a contractor, but they come in much earlier. In fact, before the construction documents are complete. And we did this on the high school. So they, they play a very different role than the general contractor does. There was some interest in a CM at risk approach before we were confident we could get all the kids off site. Now that we feel we can, the project team has, let's say, less enthusiasm towards the CM at risk model. And that's really kind of up and down the board and that includes some senior town staff given the experience we have in Winchester, I, I kind of agree with them. Anyway, so you can certainly reach out to me or Dr. Hackett offline if you've got more questions about that. There was a helpful, very high level presentation distinguishing between the two at the last EFPPC meeting. And I, I think, Dr. Hackett, we have another meeting or two before we will actually make a decision. But, but that, that's another key decision point that's coming. And really beyond that, I would just say the architectural and engineering team, given that the PSR was approved, are really now kind of in a stage where they're looking to gather more information. The geotech I've already mentioned, the teams had a helpful meeting with department heads like fire, police, DPW, along with Dr. Hackett to understand what the town's looking for, that I understand very, very well. And now they're just kind of in the process of getting started on the schematic design component. And we will need to just be really diligent in finding opportunities for not just the parent community, but the broader community to, to kind of check in and see what progress we're making. And I think we can do that virtually, maybe through our communications group or what have you. But I'm hopeful in the next couple of weeks, we can maybe pinpoint some dates to make that possible. So that's a mouthful, did I leave anything out, Dr. Hackett? No, I, you hit it all, Mr. Nixon. I would just say if anyone has any detailed questions about the geotech report, you should really reach out to me directly because I do have most of the answers on that. Although I, I'm kidding, of course. The last EFPPC session was way over my head and not that it matters, but just a testament to the, the quality of the people who are on the FPBC and the amount of detailed work that's happening and, and the push really from that group on our architects and design team to really give good answers with really some very specific questions that I, I think were very well served by that group. You should feel very confident in what, in, in who is representing you and how they are representing you. And I should also just clarify, when we talk about geotech, we're not talking about soil contamination. So that we already have some feedback from our early rounds that there's no concerns about chemical contamination or what have you of the soil. So this is really more about determining the load bearing capacity, the plasticity of the soils to understand what we need to think about when we actually design the foundation of the building. So it's, it's really a, it's a structural evaluation, if you will, of the soils.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. I am unmuted now. Thank you, Mr. Nixon and Mr. and Dr. Hackett. See, you got me all confused now. Mr. Brady, your hand's been up for quite a while. Did you want to circle back with a question on something that Dr. Hackett or Mr. Nixon?
Thank you. Yeah, I just had a quick question for Frank. When, when is the time for us to give any input as committee members into this schematic design? And what does that look like? What format should that take or is there not an opportunity for that?
Definitely, definitely can be an opportunity from a formal perspective. The committee is welcome to, if you'd like to, we haven't really had this conversation. Obviously, it's individual committee members. You have the option anytime you want to, as any person or member of the public would have. We can provide you whatever information you might need. EFPPC meets regularly, you can listen in on those meetings as well. But if, if please, if the committee would like to have a more detailed kind of update, which I believe we had kind of conceptually talked about, Madam Chair, during, during July, that might be a really good opportunity and whether or not we need a separate meeting, just kind of as a workshop session on that to really be able to kind of dig into it, would be up to committee, but it would be definitely this summer, Mr. Brady.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any additional questions? I just had a couple of quick questions if nobody else does. Mr. Nixon or Dr. Hackett, the wellfields, you talked about geotech. Is that involved in that study? Has any progress been made on remediating them or are they, have they been set aside for the time being?
I'm happy to jump in on that if you like. So that, that's actually a bit of a, a separate issue. The, 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 the wellfields really sort of came up critical path because the MSBA would simply not approve the project unless that parcel was under our ownership. TAPE, and perhaps this will become clearer when they do give an update, is in the process of sort of fine tuning the, the location of the footprint of the building. And I think there will be very, very minor impact on the actual footprint or foundations associated, you know, with wells themselves. But the, the town actually did hire, I think it was VHB to go through that process to kind of walk us through administrative, excuse me, administratively what's required. And I do think it is very straightforward. So I think we could maybe ask Meg White, following this meeting for a detailed update on this, Ms. Bergstrom, to see where we stand, that the town basically was funding some portion of this and some was being funded through the EFPPC. But we don't, basically the work that's coming in this summer has nothing to do with the wellfields, nor do we feel like the existing abandoned wells are going to be an obstacle to progress on the project. But we can certainly follow up on where we stand with the formal decommissioning.
Great. Thank you very much. And then my second question was about the warrant article. Do you anticipate the vote on the warrant article to be a select board only or a joint select board, school committee warrant article and backing up from January 7th? Would that come sometime in November, early December? would that come sometime in November, early December?
Mr. Nixon, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you. So just last week, we had a conversation with our OPM, which is Hill, to develop kind of a back of house schedule that includes items just like the one you described, so we can begin to understand the order of events and the cascade of events to be sure that, you know, whether it's town manager or public bodies or what have you, have ample notice to, you know, to act on information. To to the first part of your question, I would presume it would be a joint vote. I think that's how we've done it in the past, Ms. Bergstrom, though don't hold me to that, but I think we've done it jointly in the past. There will be, so there will be, there's really no action we can take until the board approves schematic. However, another example of what we're doing to try to stay ahead of schedule is that although we can wait, you know, weeks and weeks and weeks, once the PSR is approved, to engage with the legal team at the MSBA on things like project funding agreements and warrant article language, there's no reason that we have to. So we have had some discussion with the OPM about accelerating that progress, that that process with legal, so that the review of the project at the MSBA with the architects and engineers can be happening almost in real time with the lawyers. Because things will start working, things will start happening very quickly, right? Once the schematic is submitted in September. So i- in fact, and I think it's on that, the homepage on the Lynch Project. I think the schematic, is it due on September 1st? Is that right, Dr. Hackett? No, is it? It's the, I know it's the first week.
Early September.
I think it is. Is it September?
Yeah, September 1st.
Okay, there you go. So what we have discussed internally is actually getting some draft language into council with the MSBA as early as September 8th, which we are, which we are welcome to do. It's not that common, but OPM has confirmed we are welcome to do that to start the conversation so that nobody feels like they're in a hurry up offense mode for fall town meeting, which I think is the gist of your question. So that is, that's ongoing. And as I said, they're working on pulling together a detailed schedule for us.
I would just like to reiterate what Mr. Brady's question and follow up with you, Dr. Hackett. I so appreciate the expertise of architects and engineers on the EFPC. And I appreciate spending an entire meeting on geotech. If we don't have a good foundation and a good solid footprint, we can't build an extraordinary building on top of it. But I also am concerned about making sure that we have eyes on the schematic design for the building and thinking about what's inside our building as well as what's under our building. So if we could continue to schedule meetings for this committee, if we can think about how to do that, a workshop format, and make sure that we have some more eyes on that part of the process, both from our, you know, our leadership team as well. We appreciate when they weigh in on that and our educators, that would be great. Are there any other questions from committee members or are we able to move on? Okay, then the next item on our agenda, thank you, Mr. Nixon and Dr. Hackett for that thorough update. The next item for our agenda is the first reading of the school committee policy BDB. It would be the school committee officers' policy. We looked at this initially in our reorganization. The policy subcommittee reviewed the MSC recommended policy on BDB as well as that of neighboring towns. We attempted to capture the intentions that were spoken by this committee at reorganization as well as our own prior practices that might apply to this role. This is a first reading and we welcome your input. Ms. Balanese, did you have anything to add? The changes here are noted in red. The items in black are, remain as they were written by the MASC. We, I would say we fleshed out the recording secretary role in a little bit more detail.
I would just also add that I'm sure the what's what is in black is actually part of our existing policy.
Thank you. That as well.
The only thing I'd say with the recording secretary description is that we had taken or we had started with the MASC's online policy about sample reference policy on the recording secretary or clerk, as it's known in some other districts. And we worked from, we took that base and then worked from there and tweaked it, as you had said, to as we saw for the needs for our own committee.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about this role as it's written? Excellent. Well, if anybody does have any further questions or comments, please feel free to get back to Dr. Hackett or myself with those. Barring no major feedback or revisions to that role, I expect that at our next meeting, we will then have this policy on our agenda for a vote. And that would bring us to our next agenda item for the meeting, which would be a consideration of the preschool tuition for 2022-23. Understanding that this item is generally taken up sooner in the year, Dr. Hackett is recommending that preschool tuition be increased for the 22-23 school year by 3%. This percentage increase amount is based on conversations with the preschool supervisor, Sarah Casey, and interim finance director, Mr. Peter Rowe. It's also in recognition of the need to offset more of the 2021-22 preschool expenditures through the FY22 general fund. We do not have this on the agenda for a vote tonight. Dr. Hackett, would you like to give us any more information or background on this and talk a little bit about why you brought this item to the agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I just to add to that, we actually, you have voted for a a 3% increase for the last five years. That was information that was provided to me today by Sarah Casey, who is a coordinator of the preschool program. We, it essentially is, keeps up with the cost of adjustment of of living for for us in terms of our staffing and other needs within the program. We also are are and remain consistent and very competitive with other programs within the area, particularly public school programs. And I know that that was not the case at one point, that you did have to make an adjustment to that. I would just also, and again, this is for reports and discussions tonight, but I would add to that I think it would be, it might be worth considering at the next meeting, that instead of voting for a 3% increase for just a 22-23 school year, that you actually vote a ongoing annual increase of 3% every year and then take action to not do that increase. If in fact, you want to reconsider it, I think it is, it this, you know, it has apparently, my understanding historically even has kind of snuck up on us. And it's one of those items that can fall off the radar pretty quick quickly. Parents want to be able to plan. I do think a 3% is reasonable. And again, we're not, it's not that we are not the we're still one of the best games in town from the perspective of costs for for parents for the for the paying portion of our preschool program. So just wanted to put that out there for your consideration at a future meeting. But there's no question that 3% does make sense from a fiscal standpoint and quality of program standpoint.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. Mr. Brady?
Thank you for that. I guess my question I have is just our our budget. We increased for the year over 4%. So I'm wondering why we only need 3% increase in our preschool tuition if we asked for an overall budget from the town that was a four plus percent increase? Just curious about that.
Very good question, Mr. Brady. The the program itself is not self sustaining. We don't, it's not self funded. So we do absorb and you always have absorbed portions or or parts of the expenditure of the program within the operating budget. I think that that has been true and and would remain true. It'd take quite a significant increase in tuition to be able to to actually fund this entirely privately. So as you know, 50% of our children are non paying, non tuition students as it is. So a big portion of the increase in staffing generally is related to those students who need some additional support within within the school program.
Thank you.
Mr. Nixon?
Thank you so much to Dr. Hackett Chagrin. I'm gonna, I'm gonna maybe throw a wet towel on the idea of just increasing 3% every year. I'm just gonna make an analogy to athletics where, I mean, we could almost sort of take the same approach to athletics, but I do think it's important for the, any school committee to understand what we're spending the money on. Because sometimes that increase in, let's say for sake of argument, it's 3%, might actually not be enough. And we did get into a structural deficit on athletics. There was a point a few years ago, Ms. Bergstrom may remember this, we we don't, we do not each year take a very deep dive into staffing on prepay or preschool, excuse me. But there was a year where we added, I think it was either a, I don't know if Ms. Bergstrom remembers this. It was either a 0.5 FTE or did we go from a 0.5 to a 1.0? But we increased administrative support for Ms. Casey at the preschool. And because that was a position that was specifically focused on the preschool, that then entered into some lengthy administration evaluation and a recommendation on preschool fees. And I think that, I think that that was really appropriate at that time. So kind of speaks to Mr. Brady's question, you know, we can do things as a district at 1% or a 8% or another. But the preschool is such a sort of unique, specific operation. If we wanted to, we could kind of break down some of those costs. So having said all that, we always do increase it every year. Some years we look at it in more detail than others. I I'm curious to know, Dr. Hackett, what was actually said to parents who were entering into the lottery and who have signed up typically? But our practice is there's a message that comes out from Ms. Casey that basically says, you know, the school committee has not yet set the fee, but it typically increases 2% to 3% per year. Is it your understanding that something like that went out this year so that we're not catching families by surprise?
It's my understanding and my, I can confirm that that was the message, message that was.
Yeah, okay. Man, I I think it's a very reasonable proposal, the 3% this year. And and because I think it has been a little while since we looked at some of the details of preschool. I don't think it would be inappropriate to to look at it in more detail, you know, next time, but a little earlier on the schedule so we can make some adjustments, maybe in a more timely way. But you're right, kind of snuck up on us.
I would also just remind the committee that this is first year that you've had four sections at Parkers. And with that, there have been some expenses that have been more than you would have normally had, given the program in a building where you can take advantage of some of the resources within the building, including the fact that Ms. Casey's had some additional responsibilities that our principal liked this year and will remain. And those will remain for her for her next year and the year after, actually, as we prepare for the Lynch Project. So this year was a little bit of a different year, as you know. Next year, we'll we'll level out a little bit because we are, we're kind of settled in now. But still, you do have, for example, we have a full time nurse at Parkers for the preschool program. You would not normally need, you would definitely not need a full time nurse for the number of students who are served in that program. But obviously, we have to have one when they're in a separate building. So just something to think about. And I would, I would raise your wet blanket, Mr. Nixon, just suggest to you that I would also be willing to make a recommendation to do a 3% across the board increases on athletic fees on an ongoing basis and then reconsider when, in fact, you realize that you may have a structural deficit. Because I I think that what can happen is that parents can't plan. And also, just from from an administrative standpoint, it's just nice to know automatically what you're going to be rolling into. And if 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 consideration has to be given to something other than a 3%, whether it be up or down, then that conversation can be a little bit more in depth. And and my experience has just been that you then can really kind of get at some of the questions that you might have as a committee for that.
And I appreciate that. I I would, I would share with you and maybe remind other committee members that we, in the past, we've struggled when we have to raise fees because nobody really likes to. And we've had some difficult conversations in the past and we wondered aloud why it is that the fees are even necessary. There are there not some basic services that we feel we can provide students without an add on? And there's really an impressive list of districts that provide athletics, for instance, for no fee. But that's because they're in a position to do so. So as, you know, we've discussed in the not too distant past, it'll be interesting to see what happens with enrollment in Winchester and at a very kind of macro level, what what changes are ahead? We get through collective bargaining. It would be interesting to see what our resources really look like if we're going to get back and reevaluate, you know, fee increases. I I I tend to not want to increase fees unless we really have to. But I take the point. Ms. Bergstrom, my last question to Dr. Hackett is he mentioned the nursing. So it was just reminding me. We have more custodial support at Parkers this year because we have preschool there. But those are, of course, those are DPW folks. Do you know where you stand next year with DPW? And is there, is the 3% increase you're proposing, does that include some sort of offset? I mean, are we basically paying DPW back for that custodial support? Or is that something that needs to be kind of rolled into this as well?
It would be rolled into it as part of the, as part of the operational cost. So it does not consider any additional costs for custodial services, which are, which are definitely real. We do have that that cost. So again, you know, we we're kind of operating in the same way that you have been operating. There was really not a lot of adjustments made for the preschool program coming to Parkers. You you know, and obviously, we face some additional expenses with that that were not entirely anticipated with the elevator completion and those kinds of things. So, you know, I I think we're in a good fiscal position. I agree with you entirely. You know, if we're going to talk about not charging students for things and families for things, I would start with transportation. I mean, I, I think that's a really good conversation that committee might want to have at a future date. You know, rolling back fees on some of the things that we do, I think is a good conversation always to have because we do a lot of things that, or we we charge for things that's, that families in some cases really just need to have. And and, you know, that's kind of the experience everywhere. But to your, to your point, Mr. Nixon, there have been districts that have eliminated all the back fees, understanding that, you know, they have the capacity to do that, but I still think it's always a good conversation to have.
I I agree with you completely. I'd be given your comments about nursing support and with the custodial support at Parkers. Maybe the question is, are you comfortable with that 3% as a preliminary recommendation? Or is your recommendation, or is that something you want to look at? Maybe a little more carefully. Does it need to be a little more than 3% just given our current situation?
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable because it is a a temporary situation. I would not want to raise fees too much at this point because it is, you know, as we know, this is a temporary placement of the preschool program until the Lynch School is complete.
And that becomes the new baseline then. Mr. Brady, did you still have your hand up? I saw it go up.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Passing thought.
Thank you. Did anyone else have any questions about preschool tuition? Then, Dr. Hackett, I believe you will be coming next back to us at the next meeting with the recommendation regarding this and whether it should be recurring or not. I would like committee members to think about that between now and the next meeting. I can see some value in personally in parents being able to plan, knowing that it would at least be 3% to Mr. Brady's comments. Sometimes it may need to be more than that, but it would be nice for parents to know what the, what the minimum threshold might be as they're making considerations for their own family planning for the next school year. I don't believe, Dr. Hackett, that if we would set it a recurring 3% that would ever prohibit any, this committee or any committee that comes after us from decreasing that percentage or increasing that percentage each year based on our needs and that we do take fees up every year. And we do want to make sure that we do so in a timely fashion to be able to get tuition letters out to families.
That's correct.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is an acceptance of a WIFI grant. I'm going to ask that we actually take, Dr. Hackett, the the item after that. Ms. Conley was hoping to be here and asked if we could take that item last so that she could potentially be here for that one. She had conflicting meetings this evening. So I'm going to ask that we look at the consideration of the school committee meeting dates for 2022-23. The recommended dates have been previously distributed and we're just looking for approval for these this evening. I guess I would ask the committee approve the meeting dates and times as stated unless there's any strong objections at this time. Understanding that there's no perfect time for any one committee or staff member, I'd recommend we remain at 6 o'clock for the time being. Additionally, I'd request committee members also, as discussed prior, have a soft hold on every Tuesday of the month so that the chair and the superintendent have a flexible day when unexpected business arises or executive sessions are needed, as that would be able to add additional respect and space for each member's work and family and individual schedules if we were able to plan out a little bit further. But I do welcome any further discussion on this or just a vote as, as accepted.
I'll make a motion to approve them as they're written.
All second.
I'm all in favor and we do need a roll call vote on Zoom. So, Mr. Nixon, you're at the top for me.
Hi.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Bolanessa.
Aye.
And Mr. Hopcraft.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous, thank you very much. And we hope to be able to bring you a more consistent schedule in the coming school year. But we don't promise it. And that brings us to the WIFI item. Dr. Ellen Nema, I'm, I am seeing that Ms. Conley is having some trouble getting in. Are you able to text her a link for this meeting?
Sure.
Thank you. While we wait for Ms. Conley, I'll just give the chair or the committee a little background on this item. So, I am pleased to report that WIFI has voted the other evening a proposed donation of $22,250. And that is two items that we will be taking up to education grants. One is for a calming corner at Vincent Owen. This is from a teacher Tara Remus and it is for $1,000. It is with some forethought on this Remus part that she has noticed that her students need a place to go when they need to take a moment and take a breather. And she has a desire to create a space in the hallway that is underutilized at the moment for a warm and welcoming environment for her students. This grant will fund furnishings, manipulatives, and other resources that will provide this space near the library for students to be able to retreat to when they just simply need a break. I think it was incredibly thoughtful of her to think of this for her students and for her to take the initiative on. And I thank WIFI for being able to donate to that, and that is a gift of $1,000. The other is a professional development grant. And I am going to invite Ms. Conley and Dr. Ellen Nema to introduce this exciting anti-bias initiative that is a district-wide initiative that WIFI has granted $21,250 as initial funding for. And I know that we have two people who are very interested in that and would like to share that with us. So, take it away. Oh, I think you're on mute, Ms. Conley.
Yes, now I'm unmuted. How are you? Thank you, thank you for joining us. Thank you so much for inviting me to join you tonight and to consider these two grants. The first, as you mentioned, is $1,000 for a calming quarter, coming corner, rather, at Vincent Owen School. Again, a response to the pandemic, which we thought was a sensible one to allow kids a place to sort of unwind, get themselves back together. Apparently, this past year, they've been utilizing the hallway and some desks, and so this is a little bit more conducive to relaxing. The larger grant is, as you mentioned, a $21,250 grant that is hopefully the first of a five-year initiative to begin addressing even more deeply the anti-bias work that the district started several years ago. So, when Dr. Ellen Nema came to us with this proposal a couple of months ago, we really had to think about it deeply because not only does it involve educators who have been working towards this goal now for quite some time, but it looks to try to involve the larger community, which is, I think, a far more complicated project and one that we will have many people to meet on many different levels. So, we're very excited about this grant, and I don't know, Dr. Ellen Nema, if you'd like to dive a little deeper into it. It is still the very beginning. This is a grant that WIFI approved two days ago and you were good enough to get it on the agenda right away. So, this is the beginning of what we hope will be a serious five-year system-wide initiative.
Thank you, yeah, this is, we're so excited because this is a work that we've really been trying to do kind of piecemeal as we can afford the pieces. And we have established a great relationship with, working with Sarah Wick, who was part of, which used to be teaching tolerance, learning for justice. And all of our new teachers are trained in the social justice standards and build a unit with those standards built in. And our teachers are working on kind of developing a scope and sequence around these. So, we're excited to go to the next level and to be able to do that partnership work beyond just the teachers. So, we are so appreciative to WIFI, knowing this is a long-term project and being able to go to this deeper level will, will make a huge difference. So, thank you very much.
Well, and thank you to everyone in the district that's continued to do this work. I think it, it's work that's difficult, it's work that tends to be under the radar, and it is certainly work that is spread in its scope over a huge number of people, right? We're all in different levels of a journey and all of Winchester teachers fall into that same category. So, you certainly have some folks that are way ahead of the pack and other folks that are just beginning to explore this. So, I think that this grant, taking a similar approach to what we did with Powered Up, which is allowing the district to take the lead, to own it, to fund it, and for WIFI to be a partner that works along the way to say, do we need to tweak this? Do we need to tweak that? Where are you? Makes a lot of sense. So, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to, to answer them.
So, I'll open it up to the committee if anyone has any questions about either one of these grants. Mr. Brady.
I just want to appreciate the initiative and in particular, having the community and families involved. I've always found that to be really impactful and I think that's what we need to be doing. So, I'm excited and heartened to see that that's what we're planning to do over the next few years. So, thank you to everyone who's making that happen.
Thanks, Mr. Brady. Any other members?
I was, okay.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Bolanessa.
Oh, I'd say that my, I also appreciate the work that, or I appreciate WIFI's timing in the last few days and then also that we were able to get this onto our schedule so quickly. I'm very excited to hear about this and I remember the Powered Up initiative and I think that Ms. Conley is very correct. It's good to have the district lead and then have WIFI provide the support as we go along. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hopcraft.
I was just going to add that I really appreciate WIFI's partnership with the district. You know, this is, it's really, really wonderful to see this, this collaboration and the support for such a important program. So, thank you again, Karen.
Well, and thank you, I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to the very, very many parents who contributed to our teacher tribute initiative and the flocking of the flamingos over the last week or so. You know, that in fact was quite successful. And it is fundraisers like that that give WIFI the leeway and the flexibility to be able to donate 21,000 over one year and potentially 100,000 over five. So, really, the thanks go to all the parents in the district and the non-parents who donate to WFE and had some fun with our flamingos and the teachers who hopefully will be getting their certificates in the mail by the end of the week.
And I would just chime in and thank Dr. Ellen Nema and Ms. Conley. I know that you're speaking of this as seed money and towards what can be a larger project down the road. But I would be remiss if I also didn't thank you for all the smaller projects that Dr. Ellen Nema alluded to that WIFI has been a part of and that Dr. Ellen Nema has really spearheaded over the last several years in our work with Learning for Justice to develop the relationship with Sarah Wick, to get teachers excited and interested in the work and to have them be able to take this work on. It's not always easy work. It requires some self-reflection on educators' parts, on families' parts, to Mr. Brady's statement as part of a community as well. So, I look forward to seeing where we can take this next step of, of this anti-bias work in our schools and in our community, and I'm just excited that we've been able to get here. So, I appreciate you starting us off through WIFI and look forward to what the future brings. So, just thank you.
I'll make a motion if you would like.
Happy to take a motion.
So, I would move that the school committee accept with gratitude the grant of $21,250 from the Winchester Educational Foundation for the purpose of expanding our work as a district in diversity, equity, and inclusion. And additionally, we direct Dr. Hackett to work with Dr. Ellen Nema to develop a plan for this grant to be presented to the school committee at an upcoming meeting. And additionally, we appreciate the $1,000 for Ms. Tara Remus to create a calming corner for a total of $22,250 in grant funding.
Second.
All in favor, I'll need a roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bolanessa?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And Mr. Hopcraft?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous. Thank you very much and thank you for being able to join us this evening, Ms. Conley.
Thank you, and I hope that everybody has a chance to have a relaxing break. I know everybody doesn't go on vacation in the summer, but perhaps things will be a little more relaxed. So, enjoy.
Thank you. You as well.
Indeed.
And I believe that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is our chair report. I would just like to offer congratulations to Mr. Lynn and the staff of McCall as well as the class of, well, it will be the class of 2026 that successfully completed middle school last Friday and has now moved on to become ninth graders at the high school. As a class that had much of their middle school years disrupted by the COVID pandemic, their enthusiastic support of each other at the moving on ceremony was incredibly heartwarming. We wish them all the best in their high school years. While the students have now left the building, we also appreciate the business of district leadership and educators marches on. Many of our extraordinary staff are part of the summer programming that Dr. Ellen Nema talked about at the top of the meeting. I'd encourage that if there are any parents that are still interested in enrichment, are there any programs still open, Dr. Ellen Nema, for the summer?
And the enrichment programs are still open and for the extended year academic support, people are still welcome to fill out the forms that were sent because if we end up having students that can't attend, we'll always fill with people who are interested, so.
So, thank you. So, please consider a WPS summer enrichment program as part of your summer plans for your students. We wish all of our educators engaged in summer professional development while is, that they have a lovely summer as well, engaging in their own education. And we can't wait to hear what they've learned when we come back in the fall. To our families, please remember walking, bike, and water safety while adventuring with your families this summer so we can all have a safe return in fall of '22. And I can't end the school year without remembering, reminding people that the beginning of the next school year will be August 31st, 2022, prior to Labor Day. So, as you're planning, please take that into consideration. And lastly, I'd like to acknowledge yesterday's Juneteenth observance. While we were not in school, I hope that all of our families were able to discuss this relatively new federal holiday with their families. Juneteenth, Juneteenth is a federal holiday in the United States commemorating the emancipation of enslaved African Americans, and it marks the anniversary of the announcement of General Order Number Three by the Union Army General Gordon Granger on June 19th, 1865, proclaiming freedom for enslaved people in Texas. As Coretta Scott King has said, "Struggle is a never-ending process. Freedom is never really won, you earn it and win it in every generation." So, thank you, and that is what I have for the chair report. Mr. Nixon, did you have something to add to the chair report?
Well, first of all, thank you for what you just said. As a product of the Texas public schools, I think it is just fantastic. It's a public, it's a federal holiday, so well done. I actually just wanted to follow up with a question to Dr. Ellen Nema and your, your highlight of things to look forward to this summer, Ms. Bergstrom. So, unless it's in my junk folder, which is possible, I don't know that we've sent out yet a summer reading list, particularly for those sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. It does exist, it's on the website, and I know Bookends has it. I was just going to ask if we could maybe push that out through some needs, Parents Square, what have you.
It actually has been pushed out, Mr. Nixon, just so you know.
Yep.
Has it?
Okay. Yeah, it was in the digest.
Thank you for that, it tells you a lot that I missed it, but.
A little busy.
I've been a little busy, but I, you know, but here's the thing, I still knew, I knew to go look for it on the website and I found it there. And Bookends has it, and they've got books. So, it's a great resource for parents, if you're looking for something to do with your kid to keep them busy at the start of the summer. Thanks.
Dr. Hackett, did you have a superintendent report this evening?
Just, well, it's hard to follow the chair's report this evening, so I'm not going to try to outdo you with that. Very well said, I just would say that I, I'm very excited about the opportunity to work with WIFI on the, the grant that was described earlier this evening. And I am particularly excited about the fact that it involves a community because I do think that schools often are given the responsibility to carry out this work and we cannot do it without the support of the community. So, I'm excited about that part. I don't know that a lot of school systems are actually doing that. So, I, I, I think it's a, it's just a great opportunity for us to explore different ways to, to get at this work, which is, I think Karen said very appropriately, is, is, can be very personal and everybody's in their, their own place and on their own journey with it. I would also just kind of reiterate what I put in the digest, just thank the staff and families for all the work and hard work and dedication over the course of the school year. It was a, it was a bittersweet year in a lot of ways. We had a lot of great things happen, we had a lot of real challenges. Principals in particular, I just would want to recognize to, just to say that their, their ability to keep our schools open and what I know they had to do for shifting staff around, including pulling several people out of central office at times to go in and actually substitute, a couple of them who are on the call this evening, to get through the day was pretty extraordinary. So, I would just thank you also as a school committee, I don't think you ever probably hear that. You have been extraordinary this year. I think that your ability to kind of navigate through this year and, and coming off of last year and with two brand-new members, and as I've said to others, I think in many ways, this year was much more difficult than last year, if you can even imagine it, because it was just really uncertain in many ways. And people were very anxious about what the, what the return looked like and how we're going to keep our kids and our staff safe. So, I just thank you for your dedication and your, your efforts. And I know that the money is always worth it for you, but I do just think beyond the money that you receive as public officials, it's really important for us to also remember that you are human beings, that you also are subjected to some of the same things that, that those of us here also are subjected to that are on the payroll. And I just really appreciate your work, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hackett. Right back at you, and Mr. Nixon may have missed the reading list, I think I missed the check in the mail, so. And with that, we can take a look at our future agenda items. Did you want to pull the agenda back up, Dr. Hackett? Thank you. So, we have the tentative future agenda items. We are going to try moving forward for committee members that have noticed to try to put an anticipated at least a month when we expect these items to come on our agenda. So, the superintendent's sum of evaluation, we expect in July. We expect another Lynch Project update in July, potentially with a Lynch workshop. We have the Manchester Field Policy, which we. We have the Manchester field policy, which we expect. We're hoping for a July meeting with the select board, but a lot of that will depend on how much progress field management takes. We do expect MCIA. They were unable to attend last time due to some technical problems with their website. But we're hoping they should be able to attend in sometime in July or August to share that exciting new work with us. We have central office relocation, which we expect to make come up as part of the Lynch project in August. Typically, we begin to look at Fall Town Meeting warrant articles that may pertain to the school committee each year in August. And we have the school committee superintendent goals in an August workshop. Mr. Brady.
Thank you. I really appreciate everything that you said about Juneteenth. So I'm hoping we can add back in, we had talked about when we approved the calendar, that we were going to have further discussion of whether we might consider. Listing some holidays on our school calendar and so I'm hoping we can have that come up sometime over the summer before the school year starts.
I believe it has already been done on our school committee or on the school calendar website, Mr. Brady. If you look alongside the school calendars, it has, is that not correct, Dr. Hackett? Am I misremembering that you have holidays up there as well? On the calendar portion of the website?
Yep, we set publish a separate list with the calendar. Yep, it is on the, I believe it's on the website. I have to check. Made it over to the new website, but.
So we'll take a look at that. We'll put on that so the committee can take a look and see what that looks like, see if it matches what you're looking for, Mr. Brady.
Much appreciated.
Sure. Mr. Nixon?
Sure. So at our next meeting in July, I'd like to give the, I need to give the committee an update on the status of several capital projects and include a review of those that were on the cutting room floor last year. This summer, the committee will need to have a conversation with Dr. Hackett about what our capital project priorities are. The schools typically are the last to submit capital planning in August, but to get there, we need to have a lot of conversations. So a lot of good work has been done. And I look forward to sharing with you what some of the estimates are for the work that lies ahead, but there were quite a few things that were also important to us that did not make the cut. A year ago. So I think we should plan on capital projects basically being a standing item in, let's say, for our next three meetings.
Okay. I will add that into our agenda tracker. And Dr. Hackett, we are anticipating that we may need to add an additional July meeting for an executive session. And some additional potential votes as well. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So our next meeting on our agenda is July 12th. That is actually, that is actually a bargaining meeting. Is that correct? Not a school committee meeting?
Correct.
And then we have a July joint meeting TBD with the select board. If that one is able to happen. We have an August 9th meeting scheduled at 9:30. We anticipate that being a virtual meeting. And then August 30th at 6:00 PM, that is our school committee workshop. But we are hoping to add in an other meeting on July 12.
So specifically, we have a few items, a couple left over from this evening. We have the physician, school physician item that we need to take up again. We have potentially, we should talk about collective bargaining in executive session as well. We do have, as you know, what happened in our going through a process to fill the opening of the Director of Special Education. That's another item that is timely. So depending on how some of this stuff lines up, it would be even. Yeah, if there's interest in availability, maybe even the week of the 27th, which is next week, if people could be available for a Zoom meeting.
So I think that would be potentially a late afternoon meeting on June 28th.
Or yeah, I mean, from my perspective, any anytime that people can meet.
Can I just suggest a doodle poll from either the superintendent or the chair?
We can do that. Hopefully people will respond to that in a timely manner as well. Mr. Nixon, did you have another question or was that just chiming in on doodling?
I was going to say, we could just all check our calendars right now and be done with it.
I would like to suggest 4:00 PM on June 28th if people are available. As a virtual meeting.
I'm likely available. I may be 10 or 15 minutes later at worst, but probably 4 o'clock should work.
That works for me.
If you could do 4:30 would be ideal, but. Back and forth.
Bollan essay, Mr. Nixon?
4:00 PM on the 28th looks like it works with for me as well.
Mr. Nixon, would you like to weigh in or double check and get back to me?
It looks favorable.
Is 4:00 or 4:30 better for you?
Or 30 would be better.
Okay.
Does anyone have it? By saying either 4:00 or 4:30 works for me.
Okay.
And are we doing virtual or in person?
We'll do virtual. Spain, so it's going to be 10:30. So if virtual will be great, so we don't have to fly back for it just.
Oh, my goodness. In Spain.
Not that I'm not committed to the cause.
We were going to get to fly to Spain to have.
We've talked about. The expense account will not handle it. All the fees would have to go up, but I just don't think we're ready to do that.
Madam Chair, the patient has, the patient has arrived in my house, so I got to jump off.
For letting me know, Mr. Nixon. Have a good evening. This is our end of our meeting anyway.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
It sounds like 4:30 was good. I second that.
4:30 on the 28th, I think we'll aim for and then we'll get back to you about anything else. I heard a motion to adjourn in a second. Roll call, Mr. Hopcraft? Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Bollan essay?
Hi.
And chair votes I. We'll note that Mr. Nixon left just before we adjourned at about 8:01. And with that, we are adjourned for the evening. Thank you very much, everyone.